Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, regular Board of Education meeting for the Wilson Central School District. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent of Schools. As I usually mention at the beginning of meetings, if you have a comment to make at the board meeting, there will be time at the end of the meeting. If you're not here and you're viewing this either live online or after the fact, please don't hesitate to call. Our district clerk, this is Levon, at 7501-9399. She'll be glad to direct your comment, question, or concern to the board or give the answer for you because she doesn't know it all. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to our president, Mr. Carter.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Carter. Please stand when you would like.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to your college for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Item 1B, approve meeting minutes dated November 12th, 2024. Can I have a motion?
No move.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 2, consent agenda for financial operations. Resolved that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education approved the following items, B through D, in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Does the money for the scholarship fund in memory of Diane Walensky, is it going to be a scholarship for her? In her name, or it's just going towards a scholarship?
It's the class of 70. And they're doing an amazing job, like raising funds. So, yeah, it's all being under the class of 70, doing a scholarship to the Diane's office. Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There's no item 3 for tonight table. Item 4, be resolved that the Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District hereby approves extracurricular club proposals per the December 10th, 2024 Agenda, items B through D. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Under item 5, personal appointments. By day, high middle school advisors for the 2024-2025 per the WPA agreement effective December 10th, 2024. Gordon Browning is middle school plant club advisor. Stacy Ganner is seventh and eighth grade kindness club advisor and Jamie Lech is ski club advisor. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Jeff Rogers is modified girls' basketball coach for the 2024-2025 winter season. Add coaches' salary schedule per the WPA agreement. Approval is retroactive to November 18th, 2024. Can I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, Andrea Muck is 1.0 FDB long-term substitute teacher per the WPA agreement, effective January 2nd, 2025, through on or about February 27th, 2025. Substitute teacher has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, approve substitute teachers. Liliana Avery, Eric Bitner, Samantha Cho, Denise Condi, Kalen Ferry. Substitute teachers have met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, approve non-instructional substitutes. Liliana Avery, Patricia Delacchio. Substitutes have met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 6A. Approve the following change orders for the 2021 through 2024 Reconstruction Project. GC002 for $23,752. GC006, $29,315. SC001 for $14,951. And SC002 for $19,338. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. What is, forgive me if this is kind of a routine thing, but I'm curious where these discrepancies or changes originated from.
So they originate from a number of different areas. So normally I just sign off on the change orders. Mr. Herman gives me sort of an indication. He works with the architect and contractor.
So this is where the estimate and the final price don't align essentially?
There's a number of things that occur. So they may be working on something and as they start tearing it apart, there's more to it than, as we know in construction, there's more to it than you really, so the original dollar amount needs to be changed because it's more than what the estimate was. Or the opposite happens. They start working on something in low and low, which Mr. Herman's really good at, finding money in capital projects, and we don't have to spend as much. So there's a change order that way. Why you're seeing them today, and I probably should have put this in the news and notes too, is because there's a little line in the reorg meeting that says, you guys, I'm only allowed to approve change orders up to a certain amount, and then you guys have to approve over that amount. So you're going to start seeing them, and I'll try and make it a little bit more specific in news and notes, what each one of them is for. Just on, you know, a brief line, so you know that. Off the top of my head, I don't even know which one it was. We've already been done, I've already sort of approved them, and the work's already been done, but to follow our reorg policy, we should probably tap out to the board of the way.
Well, yeah, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that, you know, like you said, this wasn't previously routine, seeing this. So this isn't outlined with what is normally seen, like this is, as far as what you dealt with in past.
No, absolutely not.
So the money's there, this wasn't a fudge room for what?
Not only in the fudge room, but we, on the opposite side, we gain more than we actually spent out. And most of the projects are light up. We try to make sure we, you know, change orders are where general contractors make their money. You know, they'll look a bid out for X number of million, millions of dollars, and then they're usually breaking fairly even. Many of those are just making a little bit. But these change orders are where they start driving the costs up. So Mr. Herman's very good at making sure we have limited amount of change orders. And also, many of the change orders we get are on the opposite, where they owe us money because they didn't need to do as much work as they had, you know, originally planned to do. So, or, you know, they get so many hundreds of thousands of dollars for 40 tons of stone, and now he needed 20 tons of stone, and another 20 ton to get back as a credit. But it comes out as a change order.
So we have Mr. Herman around these arcades, and his change order is becoming a problem.
One of the things we talked about almost when the projects were going on, is one of the things we talk about quite often is how to keep the change order coming. Because that's where they make their money. I mean, some of them are not inevitable. Well, sure, putting a rooftop over the, over the, over the Malachi rooms, and they, after they tear it apart, they say we need more steel. Okay, and that's a change order. So that might be one of them that's in there. The output steel reinforcement in that, that unit. So it just depends, there's a number of ways. And I always say, it's like owning a house on steroids. You know, you go to do a remodel of your kitchen, and you put aside, you put aside $15,000, and in the end it costs you $17,000 because something went afloat. That same thing happened in that house.
And I mean, as far as like these things potentially being like a problem, like is that basically like if somebody burns you once, you don't have any recourse there, you just don't hire them again? Or is it, you know, like I'm wondering how much of it is that now? It sounds like that's pretty unusual, given your familiarity with who you're working with and stuff. But I just, I'm curious, what's to stop somebody from really, you know, going after some of these projects or something like that?
I'm, you know, and I've said, having someone that knows the construction industry helps. Because, you know, I have surface level knowledge of the construction industry, and Mr. Herman has great, good detailed knowledge of the construction industry and work in the industry, and knows what they're all about. So when they say one thing, he's already thought of it and is trying to make sure that it doesn't happen. You know, construction projects, we try to make, you know, when you put a project out to the voters, you want to get as much as possible in return for that money.
Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve the agreement between Art Park and the Wilson Central School District for use of Art Park main stage on Saturday, June 28th, 2025, for the graduation ceremony from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Graduation in Nagano. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just one, has the rate changed in all the last few years? Is everything in the score?
No. It was, it was really good. Yes, it was very even.
Alright, well, just curious. Seems like everything else has gotten more expensive, so we always wonder. Thank you.
And any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, approve the appointment of the community education instructors outlined below for the winter-spring 2025 session, being held January 13th through June 10th, 2025. All fitness instructors are CPR, AED certified, and fingerprint clearance will be enfiled for any instructor working with children prior to the start of the instruction. Through our program does not give the instructor employment status of the Wilson Central School District. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D. Charles Stod... Stidoka from Kinesius University, student teacher in the high school at Bill Atlas. Physical education teacher from January 15th through March 7th, 2025. Suspect of rights have been cleared with the New York State Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve new high school elective course proposals for the 2025-2026 school year. Civic engagement, self-care and mindfulness, high school computer science, and journalism media productions. The new courses described form is attached. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You know, first reading policies. Item B, policies adoption, policy 3421, cut off diet and sex discrimination. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, policy for deletions. Policy 8130, equal educational opportunities. Content of policy 8130 is not part of policy 7554, equal educational opportunities. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item A. Approve CPSC, CSC 504 meeting minutes and IEP recommendations dated December 10th, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 9A, approve private car rental transportation request of Ms. Katie Carizolo for children at St. John Lutheran School for the 2024-2025 school year. No transportation requests are granted based on the 15-mile transportation limit and available seating is a sunblock. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under conference request. Ten A, approve conference request for the December 10th, 2024 Agenda, items B through G. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Question, is, was there a deadline on this, number one? And number two, is it open to board members?
The annual...
The Hudson West? The Hudson West, yeah.
The, I don't think, it's still open. It's still open. Wasn't it, I'm sorry, was it the brochure, was it due to...
I just wanted to know, was there a deadline on it? I don't know, it's not yet, but I'm sure there's a, eventually a deadline, but I don't think, I think we have a couple weeks left. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. A few conference requests, huh?
Oh, yes.
Jaycee wants to go first.
Sure. Okay, on October 21st and 22nd, trust me, certainly I will attend the annual, this was the annual convention and education expo virtually. There were 28 sessions available to view. Some were live streams from the main stage, and some, of course, the center is giving condensed versions of their in-person presentations directly to virtual attendees. What I liked about it was that I could have a conference playing continuously in the background of those sessions that I was interested in. The sessions I felt that were most pertinent to my role as board member were the threat-based assessment and evidence-based model. How the state budget process works. Mass students in schools through prevention to response. Foundation aid for past, present, and future. Education and policy to keep students safe online. Artificial intelligence, addressing current policies, and strategies for effective coordination. I know that trusty Stewart's going to be covering some of these, so I chose three that I thought were the most interesting to me. The first session I focused on was the threat-based assessment and evidence-based model. It was presented by Dr. Nina Ella Ferry from the US Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center, and Lindsay Burton from the US Department of Homeland Security, cybersecurity and infrastructure security agency. They spoke about identifying reporting and addressing safety concerns can help reduce the threat of targeted violence and enhance student safety. They also talked about ways to create a culture in school where students feel more comfortable reporting threats and dangers activity. It's a lot of incidents to be mitigated by being aggressive before they escalate. They also provided the website, schoolsafety.gov as a resource for schools to find more threat assessment tools and safety information. The second session that I found informative was how the state budget works. It was a breakout session presented by Brian Checknicki, the executive director of ASCO, Association for School Business Officials. This is a broad overview of the state budget timeline. Key maneuver processes take place at each step in the timeline, and what could happen in any step, and how that affects the executive budget. Then on the board, through two budget cycles, and I understand how much the budget, the state budget affects our decision-making in Wilson. The presentation helped me understand the state process in more in-depth, and I feel like it will give me more clarity when we're working on the budget this year. One thing that really stood out to me was how much power the office of the governor, not exactly, not necessarily personally, just the office, has in creating the state budget, and how it's different from other states and the federal budget. Education and policy to keep students safe online was the third session I focused on. The session was presented by Dr. Jill Walsh from Boston University. This was presented on the main stage to in-person and virtual attendees simultaneously on day two. Dr. Walsh highlighted many challenges that students might face online, such as cyberbullying, procrastination or overuse, radical, everything from hate speech, self-harm, pornography, cheating, and misinformation and disinformation. Her main focus though was on the addiction to dopamine that you get, kids get from online, and the need for more and more. She talked about how it's not necessarily a specific app that kids are addicted to, but things like gaming, notifications, and watching those videos from their favorite creator. What really surprised me about her presentation was the increased rise in addiction online gambling in students. Some statistics stood out to me. 50% of middle schoolers and 80% of high school students self-report that they have gambling. 14th to 19% of high schoolers meet the criteria for problem gambling. Gambling's linked to risk behavior and drug use. Gambling also has the highest rate of suicide compared to other dictions. This led to states like Virginia to mandate that online gambling be included in conversations about drugs in often halls of schools. I don't know how big of a problem it is in most of them, or it's even talked about, but, you know, maybe that's something, if it's not, that we would want to include in our conversation with kids about drug and alcoholism as well. So that's why I took away from that section. Well, I'd still prefer to attend the annual convention in person. Someday, can I have time like Kathy has? I would like to thank my fellow board members for approving my attendance. I believe my service to the Wilson Central School District will be improved by the information that I receive. And there is a link to all of the sessions, and I'd be happy to share with any board member that wants to watch them. There was one on AI. It was really interesting. They had an AI robot, or whatever. I think I had a conversation with them on the page, to open up the conference.
If you want to send that, I can have that to the...
Yeah, I think it's like a password thing.
Oh, I was wondering, can we, um...
I, we can.
Share the whole... They, they sent us a digital for everything, and then all the...
I'm sure if you ask the district school board where you're from, since we pay money back.
That's what I'm thinking.
So we pay money for, we, I think we can share.
I'll be happy to terminate the password, just for that.
Okay, you can share yours.
Sure, I'll share.
I'm still looking. After attending, I have to say, after attending in-person versus digital, digital was better than nothing. But I still personally prefer, I feel I get a lot, I personally get a lot more out of attending them. Although I looked through my notebook and I had notes from about at least 10 of these conferences, because some of them were only 20 minutes long. And I know when you go there, they're at least 45 minutes to an hour, if not longer. So they did digest some of them. The ones that I personally am interested in are the mental health ones, and there were two, because I feel that it affects us all from kindergarten, preschool, all the way through our staff and our employees. And I don't know exactly what Wilson is doing for them, but one of the conferences talked about, it's from Syracuse. They talked about where they have a counter mental health project that begins with young children. And students from the University of Rochester go in for 20 hours a week and work with them, all trained. And in order to get them, they use a rating scale. And it's something called a BIMAS. I don't know, any of you are familiar with that? And they get all kinds of grants and things like this to help them out. And there's all kinds they get. And this reminded me of SCAP. They had Mindful Mondays, Thoughtful Thursdays, Screen Free Fridays, and they talked about going in and getting the whole community involved. And, um, just to build stronger relationships. I really don't know where Wilson is with mental health and exactly what we're doing. But I know what I saw when I was employed here. I don't remember when I was a student here, unfortunately. The other school they talked about was the City of Buffalo Schools. And that one, they all say, you know, share my website, I'll share all my information with you. They have meetings on Saturdays where their staff even shows up. They had 213 people there the Saturday before a conference, which was the end of October. And they have families and community members that show up. Now, of course, our size is much smaller than Buffalo. They had $12 million in grants. And they make it be so sustainable throughout their years. But what I liked about it is they have 20 minutes a day where 20 to 24 students, and it's the high school kids, sit together with a teacher, a mentor, and they talk about their issues. Something good, something bad, what's going on in your life? Who can you talk to if you have a problem? Who can you talk to if there's something going on in your life at home? And they talk about, um... And then at the end, they end up staying together for four years, and they build a community. I personally think that sounds like it's something, if we're not looking into it, we should. I know Sweet Home is an excellent program. I looked at that first year, I got on the board. But we just, there's been other priorities. I don't know how we should go about this, but I think it's something we definitely need to look into. And now that we have a student board member, we could possibly get more input ideas from you on what our students would need.
Good topic for a workshop.
Okay, alright, let's stop there. My next thing I wanted to just touch on was and the actual plan to reduce OPI, am I saying it right? I don't even know about drugs. Overdose deaths in K through 12. And what they're saying is to be proactive, not reactive. And the reason, and they were talking mostly about fentanyl. And again, I'm not sure our school does this, but they have Narben.
Narben.
Narben?
We are, we are Narben's.
Right, I know, know that, but they put it in their AED. Do we?
Do we have staff that are trained?
No, do we have it in our AED?
I don't know.
Are you in charge of that?
No.
No? Oh, okay, Charlie was the one who started that.
And you can't just leave it in there. They must have certain, a different way, but you can't leave it in there. It has to be admitted by somebody to train.
Right, right, they talked about that.
So all of the people in our district who are trained, I carry it with them.
Well, carry it with them?
Including myself. And I have an opinion right now.
Right, but, no, I understand, well, it's, but they call it AED plus because that's written on our cadence, is what they, they said. And, um, and that started to make me think about why our students do the drugs. Is it because it gives them a sense of euphoria and pleasure? It relieves pain, and it gives them, there's a sense of being stress-free. And again, I think that goes with our self-image and having us take a look at what we can do more for our children.
Thank you very much.
I have a, I have a question. Trusty Wilson, you mentioned, obviously, in that conference, online gambling was mentioned. I was wondering, in that conference, was there anything talked about how to mitigate the online gambling for the teens? Was there anything perhaps preventative on it?
Yes, so, if I recall, I didn't fill out my notes, but her, her, the topic was... Yes, so if I recall, I didn't fill out my notes, but her, her, the topic was about like that was part of cellphone usage. And so her solution was basically basically using cellphones, creating policies to eliminate cellphone usage altogether. I know that's something they're talking about in Albany in the governor's office right now. And that's kind of a topic I'm sure we'll discuss in the meetings, but I'd like to see it stay in local control myself. But I don't want to see a broad statewide policy or something like that. That was her solution was cellphone, no, you know, like no cellphone policy and also including staff members as well.
I was just wondering as well if we could have something with education for us to help us learn more about the dangers of online gambling. Because I remember when I went to health class, that was not something that was mentioned at all.
That's why, that's why I brought it up because I, you know, I don't, I don't know if it is something that's talked about. I asked my daughter and she said that's something they talked about on the class. So if I didn't see any of our policy on that.
I'll talk to Jamie. I mean, she'll talk. Okay. I could, you know, if not too much, I'll see if that is incoming in any of her, you know, any of her curriculum or her classes.
Or even some of the after-school that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly fit well with that.
And then I have a second question. Your superintendent Carter, you mentioned that Narcan can't be kept in the AED like containers because someone has to be trained to use it, correct? So if we put it in the containers, could we have, could we train students as a part of the CPR course in a gym class to be able to use it and then we could have them in the AED?
Potentially. We're considered a, a Narcan distribution site, so our nurses are certified to train individuals. It's potentially something that could be done, but then again, it does draw our nurses away from from nurse's office if they're in the classroom. But it is something that our, well, our currently, our first aid and CPR trainer are not Narcan trained to be able to, to be able to do the turnkey training.
Yeah.
Certainly something I write down and it's possible. And it's one hundred percent voluntary. It's not something we can, so I don't know if it would make sense to do it during, you know, a gym class or first aid, but certainly we can talk about possibly offering it as an option. But that, like I said, is one hundred percent voluntary. They not always set up, wanted to, you know, you not only have to be willing to walk around, but you've got to be willing to use it if there's, if there's emergency.
Any questions?
Mr. Bennett?
I'm welcome. All right, I went to the San Diego Annual Conference of Latin Classic at the end of October. I'm going to give the bridge version and I'll share my notes with Mrs. Levon so she can share your news and notes. Just based on the session that I did attend. Obviously, the legislative update of Cynthia Geller was the first session I attended. And she, her topics included fundraising, new accountability measures and policy shifts in student services. We had quite a few sessions on AI, why, and it was strategic insights for school leaders, discussing ethical considerations, tools for personalized learning and strategies for integrated AI school operations. Positivity, positivity project, the session explored implementation of character education programs with positive psychology as well. And that helps to develop students' social emotional skills and foster school and communities, stronger school communities. High performance under pressure, the tales from the hardwood, we had an official from the ACC, he's retired now, Andrew Moroda. He used a lot of lively language, which is nice. So. And he just talked about being under pressure, you know, if he's, he's in the, you know, North Carolina Dukie and you've got Dean Smith on one side and Mike, Coach K on the other side, and a full group, a new one. So it's just how to deal with the stress of those high-profile types of, of things that we kind of run into sometimes here in the district as well. So planning for retirement personally professionally, my wife really wanted me to go to that one. But.
We don't.
Yeah, I got a few more emails, yeah, so. Few more, so. And keynote address was Houston Craft. He's the co-founder of Character Strong. And he was, his book called Kindness, obviously, and how to build a character into students as well as staff. And how we can create some of those things into schools here. But it was an excellent opportunity for me to connect with experts and also colleagues statewide. The sessions that I attended definitely correspond related to our district goals here as well. I plan to explore the positivity project in Character Strong to see how we can bring that into our kindness initiatives here in middle school and high school as well. And I thank you for the opportunity to go to this great conference. It was nice in my class.
Mr. Wood?
Paul, Amy and I went to leaders role in search of literacy for all. From Agent Hamlin, she was a very successful school principal and a superintendent and now a consultant. One takeaway was just the importance of leaders being in the classroom and observing and supporting effective teaching practices, ensuring that core lesson components are being implemented and fostering a culture of continuous improvement among teachers. The biggest message was that principals and leaders can't leave from the office. We have to be in the classroom to drive instructional excellence. And then also just talk about the importance of the science of reading. Finney McGuinness, physics, literacy, vocabulary comprehension, the Wonder Series covers all that, so we are in good shape there. And the other big takeaway, Mr. Galavich, we say too, that it's, this is not just an elementary problem. Literacy has to be pre-K through twelve. Literacy doesn't stop until you move to elementary school. The science of reading and making sure that literacy instruction is drawn, kids enter through high school. So that's important philosophy. So thank you for letting us attend. I think it was a bit of reminder as leaders, like we need to be and then just a good reminder we're striving for those excellent practices and being in classrooms to drive them.
I think I have the rest of it. This one's from Mr. Galavich. He attended the Fall NITIC, which is the Niagara Frontier Industrial Education Council at the Collins Bank facility in Elma. Panelists included representatives from local seventeen Erie County Bosse's and the Northland Workforce Training Center. The focus of the discussion was on the trades, increasing students' interest in the trades and how many of the trades will train students or limit student debt. References made to the Dream It Do It Initiative in Erie County, which is geared towards exposing students to trades, especially for those who are not attending Bosse's. He plans to seek more information regarding that initiative. Overall, the panelists did a nice job highlighting what companies are doing to attract students and how schools can promote the need for the trades. And Mrs. Mauer, she attended the second of the two-day training in Erie Bosse's. It was a science training. Project-based learning and assessment for science educators. The two-day session was called project-based learning and assessment. In this class, we discussed the rationale behind problem-based, problem-based learning. One day, we worked across disciplines to identify the components of good problem-based learning and how to help foster critical thinking, communication and student engagement in a way that addresses some of the changes in New York State curriculum. On day two, they met with other teachers in specific disciplines and looked at examples and projects and assessments and their content area and worked to share resources and create initial activities using project-based learning ideals. Ms. Nicole West, wanted to say thank you so much for allowing me here to attend the Erie Bosse's Day Two Conference about the upcoming curriculum advances known as problem-based learning. It was highly informative and beneficial session for both October thirtieth and November twelfth. The project-based learning is a teaching method that uses real-world world problems, helps students learn conceptual principles. Problem-based learning is student-centered and included courage students to take charge of their learning. It's based on the idea that students learn best by actively, actively engaging with complex problems and they apply to their learning and future problems. All disciplines are actively added, adding this into the curriculum and standards. She also went quite a bit about AI advancements and how teachers can use them to improve their destruction or even to deepen their development of project-based learning. Ms. McCarthy wrote on October fifteenth, she went to the World Language Department meeting conference. And she attended that regional consortium to construct the proficiency and comprehensive demands for world language. Working together with the Niagara Orleans districts, they looked at resources that stayed at, as available as well as other authentic resources to make new examples, new exam that fit the new world language standards that were implemented, implemented this year. This exam would give the, would be given during reaches week to all, at all schools that attended. The Spanish comprehensive exam was completed, Spanish and French proficiently examined. Completed the share point, the ship, the point structure and speaking task for the checkpoint exam, the reading comprehension and the writing components of the study. Mr. Martine, recently attended the annual technology conference at SUNY Oswego. This conference is great, an opportunity for him to branch out to see what other ideas and research are available to technology teachers like himself. It can be especially difficult sometimes. His only teacher in the district teaches certain topics and had an alternative perspectives and input can be very helpful. At the conference, he attended multiple seminars in which he was introduced to some great content such as curriculum provided by the signees manufacturing, the learning resources aims to help better prepare students for careers in the industry. Other great tools, he was introduced to some software and techniques to enhance the usability and efficiency of his laser engraver, of the new laser engraver. And all of these things, he looks forward to bringing into the learning environment. He's worked hard to build and continue to improve with his students. Which means I'd like to thank the board, superintendent for allowing him to take this opportunity to go to the conference. And final one. Our high school clerical, Megan Illey, wanted to thank the board very much for allowing her to attend the Notary Republic presentation course. She said it was very informative and helpful. The instructor went through the history of Notary Republic and the importance of following the rules and regulations once you become a notary. She provided an abundance of information and study points to focus on for the examination, including study guides and previous exams. After taking the course and studying the material, she feels confident that she's ready to take the exam. She'll take my exam at the end of December or the beginning of January, beginning on the June exam in Buffalo. And those are the conference reports.
Item twelve, fundraiser request. Well, they approved fundraiser request for the December tenth, twenty twenty-four, agenda OSB through J. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, use the facilities request. Wilson Stocker requests the use of the elementary school gym from December twelfth, twenty twenty-four through March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, on Thursday evenings from seven forty-five to nine PM as available and not during scheduled concerts or events or when school is closed. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. No action on field trips. President Stewart said there's no report for MOSPA.
I, just a point of clarification with the first field trip, letter A, that actually did not happen. That was last Thursday when the snow was coming down in areas in Erie County. Since we didn't get any snow that week, but Erie County, the, the, we had done some, that'll be rescheduled.
Parker, do you have anything for the?
A lot of what I wanted to talk about was already mentioned. The ugly splitter contest is coming up. We have like the spirit league type event coming up next week as well. The student council just finished the food drive and immediately after that, we have the mitten drive now running. The band and chorus concert happened tonight for the winter. Pink students just finished their pink paper and in January, we have regent retakes coming up for those of us who are participating in those. And overall, we're just trying to balance a plethora of fun opportunities with staying on track with education and preparing for the second semester.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay, Superintendent Carter?
Thank you. I had a number of things down, but I'm going to shorten this because a lot of it's been mentioned and you've heard me enough. Senior Citizen Breakfast, just want to thank anybody involved. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend it this year. I was in Saratoga at a conference and it was a really unbelievable turnout. Just a great thank you to Mr. Benton for taking the names and covering them for me. Holiday concerts are coming up. They're, I'll, best of the news, keep an eye on from the helm. I love all the dates of the concerts in there. So there's some this week, there's some next week. And they'll be, and we'll start all over. Glenn Colt is coming on the sixteenth. Looking forward to, I'm not looking forward to see Glenn Colt, I'm looking forward to watching Mr. Wilkie absolutely fall off over Glenn Colt. I think he's his private hero. It's quite a, it's quite a show.
He's a legend for a reason.
He is, he's great, he really is. And I, I put on our topic besides conversational like to help these trustees steward, I also added, I was going to give a recap of the rural schools conference, specifically the Rockefeller Institute. I will add that to our January workshop or just a report on what they, what they said. It was a great conference, so. And I think that's everything I have. Does the board have questions for me?
Questions? Thank you. Again, I'd like to echo the comment about the Senior Citizen Breakfast. I heard that they come running through the hall and thank you for all the work put into it and everything put into it. So greatly appreciated. Superintendent Carter, we're going to wish you well on your upcoming time off here.
Yep.
Thank you. Please keep us advised.
I'm just glad to go forward.
Okay, great. Our last meeting for the month is canceled, so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, to the couple of New Year, so. Come to the number nineteen.
I just want to comment, I was at the Senior Breakfast and it did go very, very well. Mr. Benton had a very, very eloquent speech.
Oh, thanks.
And, you know, the, there was a crowd there. I think I've been there for, I don't know how many years, and I think that was one of the biggest ones we've had.
Yeah, we're upwards of ninety, yes.
The kids were great, kindergarten groups were all, you know, as usual, but they did a great job, so it was really good. And I have a question for the ceiling. The kids that want to get involved in these new programs, what's the procedure for them to sign up for?
For the classes?
Yeah.
So when I, they have like a month or two to, you know, talk about it with their friends, their counselors and everything. And then February, the counselors go into one of the classes and they go sixth through grade eleven. And during that time, all the students are on their computers. They fill out a course request form, like what they need to take and what they want to take for that. Some of the classes will have some limits because we feel like they're going to be, you know, there are going to be a lot of kids that want to take it. But other than that, it just depends on what their path is, if they can take it, if they, you know, if it fits into their sequence, if it, they have the right presence that they need. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Public forum, this portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum and will not be allowed. The board may not respond to the questions. They should be referred to the superintendent of schools at another time. Please be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody wishing to address the board? Here is none. No need for an executive session. You have a motion to adjourn?
So many.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?